Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four Farmington School Board Meeting. Those of you paying attention to the agenda, it was a little out of order this evening. We did call the meeting to order a little bit right after four P M. And went into non-public to conduct some non-public business. We are now coming out of recess. Where we're going to discuss our plane build project, but before we do, I'd like to ask that you join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have two representatives here to discuss our plane project, which many of you at home may remember, we have gone down this exciting road of building a plane here in Farmington. So I'll let you gentlemen introduce yourselves and sort of tell us why you're here this evening.
Sure, I'll start. My name is Jeff Rapsis. I'm the executive director of the Aviation Museum of New Hampshire. We're a nonprofit educational and instructional organization based in Manchester Airport. I'm the chief staff member, but we also have a representative, our board of directors here.
My name is Fred Coker. I'm on the board of the Aviation Museum of New Hampshire and I live in Rochester.
So what brings you here tonight?
What brings us here tonight? A couple of things. We are equally excited by this project, which about a year ago, well, not even a year ago, was an adventure that we all signed on to go into together. It's a partnership, as you may know, between the school district, between our nonprofit and a third entity, which is called Tango Flight, which is a nonprofit that facilitates student plane building projects. And that's what this project really is. The students in Farmington at the high school level will be participating in building an actual flyable airplane. When I went to Spring Street Junior High in Nashua, New Hampshire, we built a flower scoop. Now the kids are doing this. Either I was born too early or I don't know. It's a project that we started in New Hampshire five years ago in a school in Manchester and they're now building their second plane. The general model of the program is that it is set up so that it does not cost local taxpayers any funds directly from the school district. And I think that's a very important part of the project. It's a true partnership between the community and our nonprofit. We raise the money from the community to buy the plane kits and to cover other costs such as rehabbing the space for the workshop. And when the first plane is completed, it is sold on the open market and those funds are used to buy the next set of kits. And it's a self-sustaining educational project that becomes, I think, a real magnet for success for young people. We did the project in Manchester, which is a very large school district. We are currently working in the Lebanon School District, which is starting a second build for us this September, in just a month and a half. And for the past year, we've been working hard with them, raising three hundred and ten thousand dollars, which we've successfully done. And they do have the kits in hand now. They renovated a three-bay garage that's on the school campus at Lebanon High. And they're, they're going to be building a plane starting in September. Farmington is on a slightly different timeframe. One reason that that is the case is because you, you just can't go to Walmart and buy one of these kits. They're from a company called Van's Aircraft. Takes about a two-year lead time to procure them. And so when we shook hands here in Farmington, we knew that we'd have to wait a little bit before the kit could be delivered, which put us at starting the program in September of two thousand and twenty-five. So it's still a little ways off, but there's a lot of work to do. The main driver of the success here was a staff member, Kathleen Sholman, who was curriculum director for the time that we've been working on this project until just last month. And with her departure, some of our board members wanted to check in with the school board and the administration because each partner in this organization, in this, in this project has a very specific role to play. Tango Flight takes on the training of mentors. Another aspect of this program is that we bring in volunteer mentors from the community to help the kids build the plane. So Tango Flight procures the kits, provides technical expertise, provides the curriculum. The Aviation Museum raises the money, recruits the mentors from the community, acts as a sort of cheerleader for it all, an organizational partner. I'm the sort of lead person in that of the project management. But the school district has a very specific role to play and it was very important that we had a conversation about what the school's plan would be with Kathleen's departure, whether it would be a new curriculum director who would be assigned these duties and what their background is and what their commitment to it would be, or if there'd be some other path that the school would like to pursue. We're open to anything, but it's a really, it's so important that it was part of the prerequisites of our RFP that Farmington responded to last November. We, we required unanimous school board support, which we received here in Farmington for purposes of fundraising and purposes of, of sort of a guarantee of continuity. And we've had that so far. With the change in leadership now, it's very important that we know what the school district intends to do to provide the, the necessary administrative capacity for this project to be implemented, to help manage it at the school level. We have no standing in the school to ask for things in terms of curriculum and moving schedules around and what credits apply and how it's going to be structured. And Kathleen's vision was to have a large percentage of the student body be involved, which would require, I think, a really deep knowledge of the, the district and the people and all that. It's very important to us that this project succeed because it is one of the smaller schools that's ever attempted this. And we felt what a great opportunity to show how powerful this program is and what a difference it can make in, in a relatively small district. It's large in spirit, I found that out, but in terms of number of students, this is, I think, the smallest school that's ever attempted one of these programs. And Tango Flight, our partner, has about forty of these programs in place from Alaska to Florida, from California up to here in New Hampshire. So we're really eager to, to make sure this has everything it needs for success and that's why we came to talk to the school board and to administration about what the vision is for that. And one more thing I want to mention is that before Kathleen finished up, she and some of our board members sat down right here in the library, which looks like it's undergoing some renovations, which is great. And we have a detailed project plan that's month by month of different steps that need to be taken. And in June, we've got some of the things done, but since Kathleen's departure, we've, you know, it's not like we're falling behind, but even in July, there's six or seven bullets of things that are mostly school-related that we, we need to know who is going to do that, who should we talk to, who would be the champion of this program within the district for it to have its best chances of success. So that's, I think, a roundup of why we'd like to have a conversation with the board. It doesn't have to be all right now, but in, in talking with the administration, I sense there's still a hundred percent support for the program. We just want to know what the details are so we can report back to our fellow board members so that we can go forward with our partnership. And one more element about that, we are responsible for the fundraising. I'm pleased to report that we already have a hundred and ten thousand dollars in C D F A tax credits that have been awarded to this program before it even started. And that's a big chunk of the, the budget right there. We have other leads on funding from the charitable gaming routine and some other things that I don't think we'll have any problem funding it. So it, it should work out that way. And Tango Flight has the kits ready and they'll be delivered in time. So it's, it is just a question about how the school is going to meet what all the obligations will be in the coming year. Because it will be pretty constant starting this summer. And so if, if, I don't know how you'd like to proceed, but maybe the administration has something to say.
I'll, I'll start off by proceeding. Your sense is correct. We are a hundred percent behind the plane project. It was a unanimous vote of the board. It remains unanimous. Losing administration is difficult, but common in school districts. Turnover happens and, however, I will tell you that our new curriculum coordinator, Kimberly, when she interviewed with us, one of the first things out of our mouth was, you will be supporting a plane project that we've already started. So that was just sort of, and of which she was familiar with the project because she came from the Manchester School District. So she was familiar with it when we discussed this with her. Now Jim, I thought she was coming tonight.
She's on vacation this week.
Oh, she is? Okay. She had, it was a preset vacation. Okay. So Kimberly is, can, and have you been able to give these gentlemen her contact information or can you?
Yes, I can.
Okay. We do have a new curriculum director and she will be the primary contact for the plane project. Because it's going to be a very big piece of our, what our curriculum looks like here. Jim, did you want to add anything to that? I mean, you, you did say that Kathleen was volunteering with your organization and is a volunteer there. So I mean, there may be some opportunity for those two to work together if need be, if Kathleen's willing to support that. But Kimberly was, we made it very clear and well aware that the new curriculum coordinator, whoever that was and that it happened to be her, would be committing right alongside of us to the plane project.
And I've said to you privately and I'll say to you publicly that this project is central to everything that we're doing going forward. When school reopens in the fall, one of the first things that our staff will hear is September of twenty-five is the launch date for the plane project for our district. And we're going to use that as a springboard to work backwards from, to bring about more project-based learning in the classroom. Because even though not every student in Farmington High School is going to be turning a wrench, there are elements of this project that have implications in various areas of the curriculum. And I can also assure you that despite the administrative transition that took place, there has been seamless conversations between past and, and present curriculum directors so that everybody's on board and on the same playing field in terms of what needs to happen going forward.
Yeah, if I could add to that, one of the things about this program that is important, that it really shouldn't be dependent on one person right from the start. And so I'm pleased to report in Manchester, it's almost an entirely new group of people that are building the second plane. That has been a gradual transition from the first group of volunteers and students. The students have graduated, the volunteers have moved to Florida or whatever, and we've had new volunteers come in. So it's renewed itself. That's one of the beauties of it. And so we, we wouldn't have expected one person's departure to make a big difference, but because it's a new program, we wanted to emphasize the need for the support to get it going. Once it's going, it, it fairly, it often does really well, so.
And Jim, I'm going to assume that Kathleen, I mean, that Kimberly has this, correct?
Those, that's a collection of emails that I have on top of the calendar and she will have that, yes.
The checklist included in here.
I'm sorry?
The checklist that you had referred to.
Will you be able to provide that?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just something Kathleen and we developed as an internal document, but she should have access to that. Once we're in touch, she'll get a blizzard of paperwork. It's unfortunate, but we do, you know, managing a, an airplane with fifty thousand parts that have to be put together, it requires a lot of organization.
Mackenzie, go ahead.
Just wanted to speak to that a little more. Jeff, so luckily Kathleen and Kim have already met in person, so there's a, you know, transfer of power there and some camaraderie forming. So as you guys, you know, you know, integrate Kim into the project, I'm sure Kathleen will be able to help transfer some of that to her. In addition, before she left, Kathleen set up a cloud-based kind of organization for that, so that was passed to Kim. I know she hasn't died into everything yet, but I know it's on the menu.
Thank you.
Board members have?
Month-by-month project outline, which is sitting right here. You can, but it's, there are steps every month that need to be taken. And we, we don't want to fall too far behind because then the project would begin to, to hit, hit some brakes. So this, this outline, which, what's, what's the lady's name that?
Kimberly.
Kimberly, Kimberly. This will be her document by which she will work. And if the board would like to have a copy of that, we can certainly provide it.
Yeah, I, well, is, is that what this is, Jim, that you handed me?
Do you have it? Do you have it already?
Yes, I do.
Oh, good.
It's on our nifty stationery that has all three logos on it.
Yes. Yeah, dated May thirtieth. Yeah, that's what this is. Okay, good.
Excellent, excellent.
How, how often do you folks meet with the curriculum coordinator typically?
Well, getting a program going, it's going to crescendo in the year prior to the project starting. It's, it's nothing that we play a direct role in. It's really up to the school to decide how to do it, but we're available as needed. And Tango Flight, the third partner also, which supplies the specialized curriculum used as part of this, is available to meet with them and to go over the curriculum, which is all on Google Classroom. And they can use some of it or all of it to integrate it in however the school wants to structure the building of the plane and how it fits into the high school's curriculum. So in setting the one up in Lebanon, we've had only a handful of meetings. It's been more about getting their workshop renovated, but the curriculum is, it's all being managed by one of their assistant principals who's in charge of curriculum instruction. And she's really taking the ball with that. We haven't had to, to, to interface with her that much.
Well, and the good news is we have the same administration here this year at the high school as we did last year, which may not sound like a big deal, but it is to us because we've had a lot of turnover here in this high school for the last several years. So we're proud to have both, both of those people back in the main office and they'll be supporting this project as well.
And some of the renovation you're seeing here in the library is also taking place in parts of this building, in part to help accommodate the plane project.
Any questions from board members? Any other, anything else for us?
The first plane that was built by Manchester Technical High School, a pilot and one of the students flew it to Wisconsin and back.
Oh, wow.
Just to show that it can fly.
That plane has not been sold for, specifically because when we started the Manchester program, we budgeted for two kits. And because we knew the first plane we wanted to hold on to and use as kind of a demo, and it's been making the rounds, we'll have it out here so you can see the plane you're going to be building. We can't land in the parking lot, but an RB twelve, this plane is designed for the home fly market. The wings can be detached and the whole thing can be trailered on a flatbed to any location you want. So we've had it inside the convention hall, the, the Made in New Hampshire Expo and all that. So I think that it's something that people will get more familiar with as, as we start working together more frequently.
It is, when the planes do eventually take off, is there a common area that you typically use? Or do you use something closer to the facility where it was built?
Well, the plane will be built here.
Right.
Pretty much ninety-eight percent of the construction will take place here up until the installation of the engine and the avionics, which is near the end of the process. Most of it is putting metal parts together using fifteen thousand rivets and a lot of other components. It's a big jigsaw puzzle made out of metal, three-dimensional jigsaw puzzle. But they can't run the engine here for insurance reasons. Tango Flight's insurance requires it to be on an airfield to do what's called the final run-up and the taxi tests prior to going for certification of airworthiness. So you get the FAA to send a designated airworthiness inspector to check the aircraft out. I should say that throughout the process, inspections are performed regularly, so we don't wind up with a hundred thousand dollar paperweight at the end of this process. So it's done, Tango Flight actually inspects things by video. You have to upload pictures of what you've done and they can say that's good and keep going. And so they've never had a plane get completed that wasn't flyable. The FAA certifies it and then it has to do a ten-hour fly-off, which is a series of tests and maneuvers at a local airfield. All of this takes place, we assume, at Sky Haven Airport.
That's what I was going to ask.
Kathleen has already identified, there's members of our museum, the Jackson family, who've been there and restored planes for years, and they seem willing to let us use some of their space for this. So that would be gift because space is hard to come by in some airfields. It's a premium for hangar space these days. And so the, the ten-hour fly-off is a series of prescribed tests that take the aircraft up and then further and further away from the airfield and higher and higher, so that if something happens, it can always glide back. It's within gliding range for the first ten hours. And then after that, it's a real airplane. And then it would get sold on the open market.
Really great. Such a great opportunity for our community, for our students. We're really excited. Really excited.
Well, we're, it's our privilege to work with the Tigers. One of our board members is a Princeton graduate. We heard about this, he said, well, I'm duty-bound to support the Tigers.
That's funny. All right, well, thank you for coming tonight. I hope we can connect you with Kimberly soon. We'll, we'll get on that as soon as she gets back from vacation.
That's great. And if board members have any questions or would like to come see the facility in Manchester or in Lebanon even, we all work together. You'll be part of a network where people help each other. Some of the volunteer mentors in Manchester have been going up to Lebanon to help them set up their inventory systems. Farmington will benefit from having two projects already going and the expertise that we get, I think, will help things get off to a fast start here. And so it's a, it's a community that we're developing. We're pleased that Farmington is going to be part of it.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Anything you guys need, just, you know where to find us.
Oh, the fundraising is only beginning. Thank you.
A little fundraising.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we, for those of you that just came in, our agenda was jumbled around a little bit tonight, but we're back, back in order here. So at this time, I'll ask if we have any public participation. Is there anybody from the public who wants to speak to the board tonight? Yes, sir. Can I, sir, can I have you come over either to the podium? Or if you want, sir, you can have a seat right here, just so that people at home can hear you on the microphone. So if we, you could just let us know your name.
Joseph Harris.
Yes.
I'm not really sure of the process. We are trying to get our daughter into kindergarten a little bit early. We were told we had to come down to the meeting here and I guess plead our case. She did the kindergarten screening last.
Okay, hold on, sir, I'm sorry. You're not out of order. It's typically when we discuss any kind of student issue, we discuss it in non-public session.
Okay.
It's to, just to protect the privacy of your situation, of your daughter's identity and things like that. Who asked you to come to us?
My wife has been dealing with someone at the school.
You can come and sit if you want. It might be easy.
She's like, I really don't want to.
Let's, I'll, I'll tell you what. I'll tell you what, with your permission, and this is totally up to you, because we actually do have the right to talk about this in public session. Most parents choose to discuss it in non-public session because it can get sort of private in nature. Would you prefer to ta-talk about it in a non-public session?
No, I mean, I.
You don't mind?
I don't have an issue.
Okay, then proceed.
So, yeah, you were.
Okay.
I don't recall her name. She said that she was putting us onto the agenda for the school board meeting and basically we had to, like.
Okay. Well, we have, we have. We have the principal here, Valley View, and we have Superintendent Desikni here. Who can shed some light on this for me?
Not I, said he.
Okay. Any, yeah, anything? Sorry, can you join the podium? Sorry.
So the handbook does state as well as many handbooks, I don't know if it's a state law that they have to turn five before, I think it's September thirtieth. So obviously, I, I think it would be school board decision on that because she's turning five October.
Right, yeah.
But they're, you feel it's best that your daughter is ready academically for kindergarten now, despite that she's turning five after the cutoff. I think it's September thirtieth, it's in our handbook now.
She got moved up at, she goes to the YMCA daycare in Rochester. And she got moved up to like the pre-K class, like many months ago.
Because they're reading, right? Look.
So a lot of the teachers at YMCA agree with us that she'll kind of be bored with kind of doing the same thing over again. And another factor of all this is they're closing that facility. She has a spot in Summersworth. We, before we even knew that, we were already kind of discussing trying to get her in a little early because, you know, it's just a month past the date. But the fact that they're closing that facility with trying to make arrangements to get to Summersworth every day after work and stuff. So we figured we'd give it a shot. Yeah, we were told we would have the results of the kindergarten screening because we don't even know if she's passed that part of it yet. We were told we'd have it today, but we haven't heard back.
I'm sorry, who completed that? The kindergarten screening? Was that someone from Valley View?
Okay, so she did go through screening.
That was my first.
Yeah, last, last week, we just, we don't know the results of that.
So my understanding, talking to the teachers, that she sounds prepared to enter kindergarten. My only not concern, my only stated fact is that if you make an exception, then do you open the door to others who spend several, sorry. But just for you to consider and why I put that, then do we have ten other kids showing up and saying, well, her birthday's the end of October. Well, it's in November, but I don't know. Those are the parts that I don't know.
This is pretty unorthodox. I mean, not, not to ask the board to make an exception about policy, that happens often, right? But I'm, I'm, I'm just with, and I don't want to name names, it's not important. I'm a little concerned, Jim, and I hope you're taking note of this, that the, the procedure of, hey, I'm putting you on the agenda to go in front of the school board. Typically, what would happen is you would reach out to the board chair or the staff would reach out to the board chair and say, we have a situation, a parent would like to address you, could we get them on the agenda? That didn't happen. That doesn't mean we're not willing to listen. That's what we're doing now. But because it didn't happen, I, I would have asked, I would have, in my mind, wanted to get some preliminary information together, the screening results being one of them, obviously. So if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is get some of that data together for our August fifth meeting. Now, kindergarten doesn't start until after Labor Day, correct? Or do they start before Labor Day? I think it's after. So is, is that, is that acceptable to you, August fifth? It's, it's still would be a month out.
Like I said, we're kind of just winging it and going by what other people were telling us. And obviously there was some communication breakdown there. But yeah, we're totally fine with that. The daycare doesn't close until like October. So I mean, that's really the biggest thing. If it's a no on that, then we're going to kind of hunt around and look for a daycare closer. But if, yes, she does get accepted, then we can kind of just keep doing the same thing we need, that we've been doing it.
Okay. So let us get information together so that we can make a more informed decision at our next meeting, of which you're invited to come to. We'll put it on. I probably will put it on as a non-public agenda item because if we start talking about results and things like that, I think it really needs to be in non-public. In which case you can come in and address us again if you need to, if there are other, more information that's come to light that you want us to hear. And then we'll deliberate in non-public and let you know later on of our decision.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
Okay. And you, you live here in Farmington?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, just making sure.
You don't have to say the specific date, but how, what's the cutoff of her birthday in relation to September thirtieth?
I mean, I'll say the day. Her birthday's the twenty-ninth of October.
Of October.
Correct, yeah, so.
And is she in, she, does she do the pre-K program here? Okay.
No, no, not here.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, and I can't exactly remember when she moved up to that class early. But yeah, she just watched all her classmates like graduate and everything. I think there's one other kid that's kind of early with her in her whole class.
Do you have any written documentation from the YMCA staff that sort of?
We, I did bring, and they made a copy of it at her screening. Like a progress report from the YMCA and it was basically, and then the teacher that I spoke with was, you know, agreeing that all the foundations were there. So that's why we hopped on to the screening.
So they have that at Valley View then?
Yes.
Okay. That'll be some of the information that we collect when we get ready. Okay. That'll be some of the information that we collect when we get ready to make that decision on August 5th.
Okay. Because usually, they use, like, early childhood assessment tools. That's pretty common for, like, preschool.
Yep.
All right, and I think that's how we're going to proceed, if that's okay with you folks, rather than trying to make a decision right on the spot, okay? I'm, we're, in the summer especially, our meetings tend to fluctuate a little bit. So, we will determine when our next meeting's going to start based on our, all of our availability. It's usually no, we, because we want the opportunity to get most of the public meeting, actually, all of the public meeting on television. We ha, Mr. Henry tapes our meetings for us, and we have to take into consideration his work schedule so that he can get here on time and get us, get us up and running. So, my guess is the earliest would be 5:00, if 5:00 works for him, but we'll have to check with him and his availability. But we typically, in the school months, the school year months, we start around 6:00 or 6:30. But I will have either you, Beth, or somebody from the office reach out to you folks and let you know when that's going to be.
Okay, yeah.
Okay? All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Do I have any other public participation at this time? They will skip down to the minutes. Oh, I have a motion.
Yes, I will make the motion to accept the minutes from, sorry, I'm just pulling it up right now, from the January, oh, January, geez, the July 8th meeting, public and non-public.
Thanks for coming.
Non-public, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes of public session from July 8th, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, non-publics, by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. Any discussion on the minutes? Having none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And welcome, Mrs. Parker, who was excused, she was at work and caught in traffic. We'll go down to reports, Valley View.
How's everyone doing?
Good, are we out?
Yeah.
Looks good.
Well, good evening. Coming into my first full year as principal, I was really excited because I knew already, like, things that needed to be done. So, we've been really busy, and coupled with summer school being new at Valley View. I think it's important to ask the people, the staff that have done it year after year, how they think things are going compared to prior years, what would they do different? And there's a lot of veteran teachers doing the program, and I've been nothing but impressed. It's been a well-oiled machine, and the staff have said that it's smooth as butter, the best year that it has been. Of course, we have a lot fewer kids, we are staffed very well, to the point that it's very important when you walk in a classroom, you see those kids getting quality lessons, right? So they are really getting a lot of instructional, good stuff in. The kids are having a great time, they love coming, so, so far, so good. I'd say the only logistics is working around the custodial staff with what they need to do in their timelines, and that feels very real to them, plus the humidity and, you know, all that factors that affect them, God love them. Someday, we'll, maybe we'll get air conditioning for the kids in our next life. So yeah, that's been really fun. We're two weeks out to closing summer school, and I think it's gone exceptionally well, in part to everyone. And Colleen's been there a lot with boots on the ground, and Donna Gilbert has started, and we've started our to-do list, so it's been, it's been very busy. I'm definitely, the focus this summer is coming up with, you know, setting those priorities. And for me, coming in, it's building that foundation at Valley View, and I'm a big-picture thinker, but I'm also, I want to get the most bang from our buck, and our hard work, and results at the end of the day. And I've always kind of seen, I've worked in a lot of different school systems. I've worked, you know, for very affluent, very rich resources, and very, you know, districts that don't have access to as much. And I've always had a heart of loving these kids, because I grew up much the same, kind of the underdogs. So, if you say I can't, watch me, right? And I, I just have a really solid team that shares those values about our kids do deserve the best, and we're going to work hard to make sure they get it. So staffing needs, obviously. We are still struggling with finding some classroom teachers. So, I look cool, calm, and collected, but inside, it's a little scary. So, we had a flood of applicants, and, you know, the time and energy, you know, with second interviews and all that good stuff, pulling the team together in the summer, and then they take something else, a better offer. But I have been impressed with the applicants that we've had. One will be recommended tonight, we're really excited. Melissa, for first grade, has the foundations and literacy, she is passionate about literacy, and that's what you want for first grade. So we're really excited about that. And we'll see, we'll see, we'll see what happens, but I think it forces us to be creative, as every school system, like Joel said, is dealing with staffing issues. And it's not going to get any better with the baby boomers retiring, you know? These younger generations just aren't going into the caregiving fields as much, right? And that's just a reality, so it just, again, it forces us to be creative. I put one suggestion, a friend of mine's a superintendent in Atlanta, Georgia, right? Complete opposite of us, but desperate for staff and teaching down there, that they've come up with a system of incentivizing people to get retention, to come back. So I just put that, you know, one model is maybe recognizing staff that are staying for some reason. I'm sorry, for recognizing them for, you know, years of service, or money always talks, right? So if they renew their contract maybe after a year, they get, I don't know, some type of bonus. If they renew after three years, maybe they get double the bonus, but something, right? Because we also have to be competitive, we're a business at the end of the day, too. Other than that, we're solidifying our SEL calendar next year. We're in good shape with our student support plan. I feel like it's year two, so it feels like it's going to be super smooth and solid. And for me, again, the foundation is you have to get the culture and behavioral systems in place. It has to be, you know, to me, very black and white, we all know the expectations, so kids can be successful, and adults, too, right? If we don't know what our expectations are, how can we operate within that to feel successful? So for me, that was ground one, get a system in place that everybody knows, including kids, families. And then two, stage two is now looking at strengthening the core instruction, right? Our kids deserve quality math and reading instruction across the board. And then we'll go from there, so I'm really excited this year. I'm already thinking about, like, our Veterans Day assembly with those gentlemen there. And it was just so beautiful and so nice, but thinking about more, more opportunities and things. I was visiting the assisted living home in Farmington, and why don't we do more with, like, adopted grandparents, you know? Going back to some of that, we're a small community, it affords us those opportunities, right? So, I'm anxious to think about how we can involve the community more. Other than that... Yeah, we've ju, we've just been really busy. We're, Kim hit the ground running, I'm just making sure we have all those instructional supports for our teachers in place, responsive classroom. Our staff will do two days back-to-back, and then we'll have two throughout the year, one of those being their supervisor. Their staff will come observe how we are implementing it, what does it look like, and kind of give us a checklist and a grading of how we are doing school-wide. And I think 99% of our staff agreed to come back on that optional day, they didn't have to. So, I think we're going in, minus the staffing issue, we're going in feeling really excited and really strong, so that's what it feels like to me, so. Any questions?
Any questions, Rebecca?
No, I do have to say, just having, knowing lots of different people in town that have kids at Valley View, that attend Valley View, just through conversations throughout the summer, just how they're really impressed with the new principal, and how well do you know the new principal, and like, well, we know, we, we, we're, you know, we're school board members. But just your communication and just your excitement, so I just wanted to give you a little kudos for that.
Thank you.
So, it's been, you know, it's been a few times now that it's been brought up on several different, you know, on a few different occasions, so.
Thank you, I want the best for our kids, I love, love our kids, so.
And it does feel so good to come into the year knowing what you need to do, right? And we, and the biggest hump for us in this district over the past several years has been to maintain consistent leadership, because that, that first year is very difficult, and a lot of people fly the coop at the end of the first year. And it, not that it's ever easy, but it certainly gets a little smoother, you know, as your, as your longevity builds, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for sticking with us.
I love our kids, that's why, do you know what I mean? They, they deserve champions, and that's it. They can go far.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Jamie Wilson.
Jamie wanted to come with me.
Yeah, sure. We haven't seen you in so long.
We walked in, I was like, who is that? I know her, I think.
So we printed out the MTSS book, which is linked in the principal's report, which is kind of our behavior thing.
Requested access, I finally got it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we couldn't open these for some reason this week, which was odd.
Okay.
Thanks.
We just had to request access, they were, it's nothing, I don't, nothing to view, it's just when it was uploaded, it was like a five-acy thing, we had to request access. So I requested a while ago and did get it, but, so I apologize, I haven't been able to look at it and record.
I think, you know, so, starting kind of at the beginning of the principal's report, that in the three PD days, we, at the end of the school year, we did some reflection with staff in what are some of the beliefs about behavior, and I put that in the top portion, because I really wanted them to think and reflect about this year, and what are you guys thinking about behaviors? And I really, I love what they said, you know, kids can be challenging, but as a teacher, you need to figure out how to successfully work with them. All behaviors come from somewhere, there's a root cause, this doesn't excuse it, but it does explain it. You know, it's just so many things that came up, and so then we, I showed Jamie, we had this multi-year system of support, which never got fully utilized, and it's been sitting on my drive, so I was like, how could we change this? And she's been working on this while I've been picking blueberries. And then we would, you know, talk every week, and I'd like our kind of game plan for right now. So, we want to roll it out to teacher, well, we're rolling out to you now, roll it out to teachers on August 27th, get their feedback. We'd like to have it available for parents and guardians at the open house, which is tentatively September 4th. Then, we want staff to kind of fill in some of the grids and the matrix. And we thought we'd go with "Grr," we're tigers, so a little growl there, but grit, respect, and responsibility for everywhere. So, the guidance counselors are kind of working on that now, and getting the kids involved in it. And then we want feedback from kind of all stakeholders, and we're going to be talking to National Honor Society, Student Council, Chess Club, all of, all of the different groups of kids, to see what kind of feedback they have as well. Because we know we'll get some feedback from the classroom, but if we can get them in different settings, after they've talked about with their teachers and their parents, and they can kind of give us a little bit more. And so then, by January, we're hoping to have a better feeling on that. We started with the positives, because that's what we want to start with, with the kids. Anything in here that you really want to highlight? Because you work really hard.
No, I just think, like, I think Giselle and I talked a lot about the, how consistency plays such a role, inconsistent language and similar language, and having students know, especially this age group of students, know, like, yep, just because mom says no doesn't mean that dad's going to say yes, you know? Like, we're all on the same page here. But then ha, then having a voice, too, gives such power to students. And so just having that kind of work with our staff and creating those behavior metrics, and then coming back and looking at them, and they get that voice, they get that voice, that opportunity to kind of look at, yep, I agree with this, this is what's going to make me successful in my classroom, this is going to be what my friends are, you know, successful at doing. But it, it's been a great process, and it's been a great way to kind of get to know the school. We looked at post, we looked at data from last year, and watched what the behaviors looks were, and why kiddos were being sent to the office, and how can we get in front of that, rather than, how can we be proactive rather than reactive? And, and I think it's been great, and I just am really excited about having that opportunity to work with all stakeholders, getting that parent feedback, getting respect with all the kids in the clubs, and, you know, calling kids in for lunch, even, hey, you know, what'd you think about your behavior matrix thing today?
I think part of it, too, is we've had PBIS in there twice for training. So we have a good chunk of staff that has, they understand what this matrix is all about, but then we have new teachers that haven't, and so I think this will bring everybody together. The one thing we haven't done in a couple of years, which is towards the end, is the cool scripts. And we are going to, based on the data that we have from write-ups, have grade levels do some cool scripts of problems that we see. And so how should this be handled? So I think that will be pretty fun and pretty powerful for the kids and for the staff, too. We're looking for, you know, staff to join in and give advice, staff that's in training in PBIS, and just kind of bringing it all together between that and, you know, restorative justice, and kind of blending the two for the best middle school experience, and looking for a lot more celebrations, so.
Really utilizing that advisory time, really strongly requiring our reports with that advisory time to have these conversations, and creating that continuity between all of the students and staff.
So, one thing, a shout-out to Sue Spinelli. She, Sue and Stephanie divide all the work, but it's amazing what they accomplish. So Sue logged every single write-up for the year, so we probably even have better than Swiss data. And she graphed it, tried, we, we were able to go through so many different things. And it's nice to be able to kind of see, like, where supports are going to be needed. It seems as though 6th grade looks like end of January. That's, everything's going smooth sailing, their honeymoon period ends, end of January. And so what kind of supports, and, and there's so much that could go with it. You know, it could be lack of daylight, it could be we're all heading puberty at the same time. There's so many facets, we're all tired, I don't, you know, I don't know, but we know we're going to target that specifically and give more support. That was one that just, like, stood out. But it's nice to see, like, oh, at this time, it's defiance disrespect. At this time, it's just nudgy behavior, you know? So, we can really plan, and then the other piece is we have, the two guidance counselors for the school have been coming in every Monday, 8 till noon, and they've been popping in at Valley View quickly to just check in, and then coming down, and we've been having a lot of conversations about advisory, and they're getting to work on that. Past systems, but the one thing that our newest counselor brought to us in her interview was this DESA program, I don't know if you've heard of it? I had not heard of it until she told us, and it's surveys that the teachers fill out, so you know, like, you, you filled out things for kids for ADHD and stuff. But these are minis, and it, they would do it four times a year. And that way, they can group the kids for lunch groups or for advisories. Maybe they're having a difficult time with, help me out with one of the skills.
Executive functioning skills, I mean, it's organization, you know, they, the way that DESA organizes it, which is really cool, I was calling Giselle on the way in, and all post-COVID data, based on what kids need the most in that SEL support and individualized learning. So they group that together, and then the kid, the teachers kind of evaluate the students every quarter to kind of see where they're at, where do they need supports? And then part of the program that we signed up for is Caitlin. And then part of the program that we signed up for is, um, Caitlin and Jackson will have access to individualized lessons and ideas and thoughts for the, that particular student based on what they need, which is really cool. Um, it's, it's eight questions, um, and I, we, we talked about it because I had done it as a classroom teacher. I'm just trying to think about, okay, we're, we're asking teachers to do this. So I gotta think through that piece of it. Um, but it, it is pretty quick, um, and especially with the small class sizes that we have. I think each one takes maybe five minutes, um, but it's also an opportunity for teachers to really get to know their kids.
I was gonna say, it's a great opportunity for them to recollect and build that relationship and perform. Yep.
Yeah, exactly. And they can access that data too, to utilize during their advisory time as well. So I think it's, we were really lucky to be able to, um, to get that in, 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 it's gonna be really helpful. And they're gonna come out and train for us.
So that's one of our PD days. It's a half day that they're gonna come out and train the staff. Um, it's not, they do have a component where the kids would answer questions, but we didn't feel that we were there yet. We just felt like this is something, um, what we're gonna ask the teachers to do. We're gonna find a time for them to do it. So we're not adding more to their plate. We'll probably use our PLC time, um, four times a year to do that. And, um, yeah, so that was pretty exciting. Like, one of the things was like positive self-outlook and stuff. Um, and it just would be nice to, to think about this and, and see where kids come in at, where they're struggling, you know? Because we have them for five years and they changed so much over that time. So.
I could send you a link too to the program, but it's DES, D, M, S, A.
Yeah.
Yes, I, okay, great. Perfect. Okay.
So that, um, is what we've been working on. We did meet with Antoine At and Ryan, um, and then James Plummer, who was like a blast from the past. Um, and Nathan Rock.
He's around still?
Yeah. Yeah, who knows? Um, so, um, one of their things is they need, I don't know if you've looked at the truancy policy, but it was made under the Stratford County Services. So that needs to be cleaned up. So that way we can, um.
Adequately process truancy.
Right, incorporated into our.
Yeah. So they said like, if, they couldn't even bring something in front of a judge because, you know, the prosecution or the, the kind of, would be like, have you followed your own school policy?
So what do we have to do on our end? Yes.
Um, I had a, a follow-up conversation with James Plummer and asked her and, and asked Brian to mark up the policy, like what needs to be changed.
Okay.
And so I believe they were gonna take that back to their team and, um, do a few edits to, to give to you.
Chief, chief's gonna be here on August fifth with us. So that may be part of what we're gonna discuss with him that night, plus his monthly report.
The concern being that if a child, um, goes through the process, uh, the truancy process and ends up in court and, um, you know, is, um, saying this is not true and there's, you know, a bit of a battle about this, it will come down to, what is your policy? And if you didn't follow the policy, even because there's a technicality, you know, we're supposed to report to this person an hour reporting here, that goes, um, would be thrown out.
Yeah, and Sharon and I, this is gonna lead into something we're gonna bring up, but we've been working, we just spent actually two hours before we came here, uh, reviewing policies and going through. And there's a lot that needs to be cleaned up. Like staff members who are no longer here, who haven't been here in like probably eighteen years. Um, so, I mean, well, not eighteen, but maybe eight. So, yeah, so we're gonna, so there's a lot. So it's on our radar. We have a whole Google Doc. So that'll be, that'll be great because we wanna make sure and all the stakeholders that can be a part of it. Because we don't know, you know, right? Like, but they do, the experts. So, um, we'll be following up with Jim and Mac on some things and you guys. So, yeah.
And I think with, with truancy too, we're not looking to punish kids. We're looking to get them into school and provide family services. And sometimes the only way to provide services is by taking, you know, is by going to court. So we just wanna get people what they need. Um, so, which I know you guys do too. So that's nothing. Um, so Gear Up, we were approached by Gear Up. I had never heard of them. I was like, oh, are you like ETS? And they're like, no. They didn't know who ETS was, but they are like ETS, except for they accept every kid. So Gear Up would be available to all sixth, seventh and eighth graders. That would be a cohort. And they would follow them through for seven years. It's no cost to us and they would provide a forty hour per week career and college counselor. They said the kind of stuff we do is the stuff that your guidance counselors used to be able to do, but don't have the time anymore because they're providing more SEL services. So it's no cost to us. Um, they, I sent the, I put the link for the two letters and if it doesn't come up, I can send it to you via email. Um, they would do an MOU, but one of the things that we almost fell out of our chair with is that anybody that's in that cohort, when they graduate, if they decide to go to college, would be eligible for a scholarship in the same amount as a Pell Grant, which right now is around seven thousand dollars. So that was a nice chunk of change. Um, so, yeah, we had to provide space for counselor, which we have space. We were gonna put the, if this happened, we would put the three of them together in a classroom. So that way they can bond and, and work for all kids. Um, they needed to do a parent night, um, which we were like, yeah, we can do a parent night in September, sure. Um, and then, you know, assemblies to get kids excited about what their career path might be. And it's not just college. Um, so they're, you know, the trades into the workforce. They wanna help kids just think about the future. Um, and I believe they would even come and, and talk to you guys. So I just wanted to put that on your radar.
It's exciting.
Um, and then the last thing was kudos to you. And, um, so, you know, one of the things Jamie's been trying to do is, um, build relationships. And we were talking on the phone. She's been really good at kind of keeping me in the loop everywhere. And, um, so we're talking on the phone and she's like, yeah, I'm going to Valley View tomorrow. I'm like, what? Cause I know that she had been there, but she's like, oh yeah, I'm reading in the classroom. I'm like, oh my gosh, that is so awesome. She'd reached out to the summer school teachers and she wanted to start building relationships with the kids that were there. Um, and so she went and read to every classroom that had Henry Wilson kids. So she started to learn the third slash fourth grader, you know, the rising fourth graders. And then we have another group of, of eighth graders that are there and she met with all of them. So thank you for building relationships.
I did. I asked the seventh grader, I was like, is this, like, do seventh graders like this? Like, is this cool? Like, and he was just, I'm like, no, we love it. Like, yeah, great, let's, let's do that. And we talked about the book and I brought a math book. It was, was really great. And I'll, I'll add to what Beth said too, like they're working really, really hard. All the groups are working really, really hard. The teachers are working really, really hard. It's a nice place to be on a hot summer day, um, which is hard to do, right? Right. So, and the kiddos, um, our seventh graders are excited to be there and having a good time. So that's good.
Any questions? Lots of good work.
If I'm a new inexperienced teacher, and the first, say, two weeks of school, and I'm really struggling with a particular student, can I ask one of you to come in and observe and say, and, and I, I guess my, I, I know I can, right? But do they know they can? And I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just encouraging.
Yeah.
Them to be told, if you want us to come in, it's non-judgmental, right? Like, let's put our heads together on how to handle this situation maybe better than we are. Because what I always taught teachers to do was to, I wanted to prevent them.
Yeah.
From pushing the issue to someone else. Because the message that sometimes gets sent to the child is, they can't handle me, right? So, and we don't, or they don't like me and we don't want that, you know?
Well, I know if I push this button or say this, they're just gonna pick me out of the way, which is what I want.
And I get, and I get that some behavior has to leave the classroom fairly immediately, but a lot of it doesn't.
Right.
And so I just, if it's a, a, a non-judgmental opportunity for my vice principal or principal to come in and just say, what do I do? You know, so I just, just a thought.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I think what Giselle does really well is, you know, she doesn't, hasn't forgotten what it's like to be in the classroom. And so I think that's really important and that's something we talk a lot about, like, we remember what it's like to be sitting in the classroom with those kids. So, you know, the goal is not to be punitive and say, well, you're not doing your job. Our job is to go in and lift teachers up and like, how do we help you do your job? You know, that's our responsibility.
I was telling Jim today that our, our, um, thought for a theme this year would be wrecking ball. Um, and so, um.
Sharon heard racket ball.
Just to what, what barriers can we break down to, to what you're doing? Because we know everybody's doing their very best and, uh, we know everybody's in it for the kids. So what, what is it that's keeping you? Um, so, but yeah. And I mean, typically I'm a hot mess. So they, they should feel pretty comfortable, you know? I mean, let's face it, if I could screw it up, I probably already have. So, you know, when you put that out, it's like, all right, there's nothing you're gonna do that's going to be shocking. Let's see this. Now Jamie, on the other hand, sounds like she's a pretty good teacher.
You'll have to play, uh, you'll have to play the Lady Di, our racket ball song with the staff every morning before the kids come in, you know? It'd be your like anthem, this, your anthem song this year.
Yep.
I had a friend tell me once, I'll say candidly, he used to say to me, it's gonna take you at least seven years to be decent. And I was in my first year. I thought I was all that and a bag of chips, you know? And she said, you're just popular. You're not good at all. It was absolutely true. I was running baseball, softball, all that. Kids loved me. I wasn't good. I thought I was. But then you start to get decent and you're like, wow, I really wasn't that good, you know? I always see my first class when I see the students and I go, sorry, Ross, you know?
Had a lot of energy.
I'm so sorry. I cared about you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
I don't see anybody from F H. I, um, just, are you, you probably don't have time to be here for non-public if we revisit something? No?
You wanna call me?
We could.
Could I be?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming nobody's here from the high school, so.
You assume correctly. The report is provided.
Right.
I would like to note with regards to the high school reports, some similarities on purpose between that and middle school, uh, in light of the overall district student success plan that we're working on.
Right, right. Which is next on the agenda.
And that is an agenda item, just so that you know that, uh, the work is, is being done and you can keep an eye on how, how it's developing. Uh, the content of the student success plan document as it exists right now isn't specific at the building level in terms of, um, what you heard in the reporting tonight. Eventually that will be folded into this, um, but I just wanted to assure you that your charge from last year. That our overall goal is to eventually reach a place where we've got a seamless pre-K to twelve plan that looks at manages and maintains, uh, the students on a successful, um, trend toward graduating and becoming, um, contributing to the community.
As well as supporting.
Yeah, that's an FYI as well. And I think, I, I wanted to wait till your. Because, um, we're looking at onboarding in two respects, um, from the new staff standpoint. What you see in, in the document that they provided is meant as kind of a, a shooting. All the. To join us mid-year. We've got, um, check-in points thirty, sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty, and at the end of the school year. And it's not the convention for being done at. It's meant, um, from an S A U perspective, so that they have another set of ears and to let them know that they're being casted. So.
Smash with the mentoring.
And that's coming as. You, you won't have ever seen this document as it is right now.
Unfinished business, high school scholarships. As I mentioned last week, and I'm, I'm not gonna get into too much detail yet because I really, I've invited, uh. Fifth meeting to discuss, uh, the J T Lamontius Scholarship and the James Thayer Scholarship. He, uh, as you know, is the chair of the, uh. Lifelong attorney, which is helpful in the work that he does. But he's identified some, he and the trustees have identified some, uh, issues with those particular scholarships. He did outline it in an email to me. I, I think I'd rather have the conversation though with Mr. Krasner present. So, uh, I probably should have invited him to this meeting, but I, I've actually emailed him and asked him if he could join us for our August fifth meeting to discuss it a little bit. Um, you know, for example, one issue with the J T scholarship is when it was originally written, it was written, uh, that it was only for a male member of the basketball team, okay? Not okay. I mean, you know, whoever wrote it had intentions because he was a member of the male basketball team, but it, it, um, the, the wording has to be looked at and sort of the intention of the scholarship. And with the James Thayer Scholarship, it's more of, uh, the way that it, it has been, the ori- it wa- how it was originally set up and then some changes made to it after Jim's passing that Bueller made to it, uh, that's, I guess, a little problematic, but Manny also identifies, uh, some ways of dealing with it, so. I, I, I'll look forward to hearing from him and see if he can come join us August fifth. Did you, did we wanna cover policy stuff or not, under unfinished business?
Um, yeah, we can just give like a little update. That's fine, let me just pull up our little note, our email. Um, so Sharon and I have been working behind the scenes a lot, um, as part of, we're part of the policy committee. Just doing a lot of work so we can start chipping away little by little. I think in order for us to really be in good shape, um, we'd like to be in good shape hopefully by the end of September. So if that's the case, we were just thinking that maybe we could just have policy on, uh, policy review on each meeting agenda from now until, well, starting August fifth. That way just, it's not, we don't inundate you. We'd like for our next meeting to really focus on the ones that required an annual review that have not been completed. Start with those as well as a couple of, uh, wellness policies, um, that the school nurse, the school nurses from all the schools, um, and Jim and Sharon and I met with. That way we can possibly just at least get a first read and review. So we, if we decide as a board to adopt them, um, then it would require some procedures in the handbook, um, to be changed and it would just make sense to do that prior to school starting. We've made a Google sheet that really outlines and edits everything that needs to be done as far as questions and things that are required, suggested changes, annual review dates, whether they're due.
Every five years or every year.
Yep, because policies really should be reviewed every five years, um, just to make sure that, um, at least. So we put that together, that way future board members, um, and Mary had done some of that legwork, um, Mary Baron prior, so we just kind of edited that sheet, so that was really helpful, so thank you, Mary. And again, just making sure that any policies that we have coming forward, we'll let Katrina, we'll let you know and Katrina know, so then that way it can be in the board folder for members to review, just take a peek at. And whoever it may, you know, require, whether it's the chief of police regarding truancy or whether it's specialist, it would be you or if it's finance, we would include Mac, you know, just to make sure, um, that way those meetings can go smoothly and quickly. A lot of them are just minor changes, like we've gone, you went through.
I went through A through E. Wow. The biggest change is with little, little things like, um, for example, did you know we met on Tuesday nights? That's a policy, okay? Little things like that, uh, sometimes bullets don't line up or a sentence stops in the middle of the page and then wraps around down here. So some of that stuff.
Or like Title IX and like staffing that was listed.
Or new R S As where it lists the R S As, but those R S As have been totally redone in the last couple of years with all the changes they've made. Those kinds of things that we've just recognized as okay, we think we fixed.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll get that on each agenda then, and that way we can.
And I know there were some parent, um, emails too that had come to us that we've been addressing behind the scenes too, so I just want the public to know, um, in the event that those parents, um, should be watching indoor students. So we've been working on that behind the scenes, we've been doing some investigating, reaching out to other schools, reaching out to the New Hampshire School Board Association, uh, and keeping our boarding, uh, informed as well during non-public, um, just regarding that. So, um, that should be, um, we'll be able to share hopefully some more information at our next meeting regarding our thoughts around that.
Thank you. New business lunch pricing.
Uh, in the board folder is a proposed price list, uh, formulated in tandem with our vendor fresh picks, uh, as well as using the paid lunch equity tool, uh, supplied by the, uh, N H Department of Ed. These prices line up significantly to what the D O E would like. It's not quite there, I think they're looking for a little bit more, maybe over three eighty. So I think this was formulated probably before they got the final C P I and stuff like that, but, um, it's recommended that we follow this pricing list, so that's what I'm putting forward for your review. Once this is solidified, I can start the application process or finish really, uh, for our national school lunch program. I'm sure we can get reimbursed for this year for our meals. And that's really.
Is it an increase from?
It is an increase. Prices are going up approximately twenty-five, twenty-five cents, I believe. I believe they were three twenty-five for elementary, uh, three fifty for middle and high last year, and adults were four even. The reduced price didn't change, um, on either side, and then free is still free.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed price list for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey to accept the price list as presented.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker, discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, bus funding.
Uh, we have Gil here tonight, he's gonna fill you guys in on what he's seeing from his perspective as a transportation coordinator with the buses.
Gus, you want, a big Gus. I meant to say Gil, you said bus, so I said Gus. Gil, do you wanna come up to the table, please?
I'll just preface this with, um, starting off with the activity that we wanted to write into Esser, the two buses was denied. It's not something they wanna entertain at this time.
Okay.
And we tried.
Do they give more of an ex- explanation other than?
I don't agree with the explanation, yeah. And, uh, we had Jim follow up too to try and negotiate it, but it's not gonna happen.
Essentially, as we get further away from the COVID pandemic.
It's getting a little, oh.
And these fundings as originally intended, they're, uh, the young lady I spoke to said, well, you know, I've, I've, I've got this ninety-five page document that I've gotta go through in order to help with these determinations and the bottom line is, um, it's either COVID specific or it's not.
Okay.
Thank you all.
What do you mean? My name is Gilbert Barrios, I'm the manager of the transportation. A little synopsis here on what we have as far as vehicles are concerned and why I am really pushing for two new vehicles. Currently, we have three vehicles that are, bus number eight is scrap, it won't pass. Van eleven, rust, it won't pass D O T. Now, we have one van, number thirteen, who needs, they, it needs a transmission. And it's running about eight thousand. That's for a new transmission with a three-year warranty. Or I could get a, uh, used transmission, but again, if, with the use, it has to go through the D O T. And we also.
Not to interrupt, um, but I think you, you, you told me too that we're still looking at, just to introduce the concept, we're still looking at the, the smaller buses.
Yes.
As a replacement vehicle. So the pricing for that ran around ninety when we first authorized it out of Esser. I told Gil I'd bring some, you know, a way to pay for it if the, if the board wants to do that and move forward with one of those buses. There's currently a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, forty-six cents as a balance in that trust fund for buses. So it wouldn't lower it to zero. Our plan is to use the end of the year fund balance as well, um, with the, with what the voters decided should go into that fund. I think is another two hundred thousand, so it would be replenished. And it would, I guess, get Gil by if we can get him one of those smaller buses. And then the other topic of conversation is his transmission request and how we would finance that. So I think he gave me two very different numbers, it's about eight thousand for a brand-new transmission and about fif- twelve hundred, fifteen hundred for a used.
For a used transmission, but there's no warranty on them.
And when is this one on again, I'm sorry?
Van thirteen.
Van thirteen. How do we number these?
I, I wonder the same.
It makes me feel like we have thirteen vans.
Right.
But it may be just in order of all the.
Yeah, I think it's all the.
Number scale.
I see, I see, okay. Just, just out of curiosity, when you say bus eight is scrap, meaning, uh, beyond repair or, or the cost of repair is just?
Well, if you have an extra forty thousand.
Forty thousand to fix it, yeah.
And it's rust.
And, and then it has to be past the D O T.
What year was that one again, sorry? Probably on here.
No, I forgot to put that down.
Is that our bluebird?
Yeah.
And when, is it us or you that is deeming them scrap? Or is there?
Take them over to.
Does the D O T come in and say, okay, no more?
Take them over to Deprezio's. They went through number eight and new brakes, rust, everything, hood, whole, they're rebuilding a new bus if we do it, okay? So that cost would be, you know, not worth it. The same with, uh, van number eleven, it won't pass inspection because of the rust. A lot of these vehicles are starting to rust and I am hoping that I can take them down and have them s- undercoated so they last a little longer. But if I note, as you noticed, I noted there that, uh, the D O T has a life expectancy of, you know, for a bus, you know, saying it's ten years. And some of them are coming up, well, two of them are already up to that point for replacement.
Alright, so.
Now.
I know it's a lot to bring to, to the board and also to the public, but these buses have been around here for quite a while.
Right. As far as them being denied through, um, Esser. Is it just because we're too far out of COVID because we'd purchased one before using Esser funds?
Yeah, frankly, I asked them that question, how we were able to do it the, the first time.
The first time.
They said, there's different people here now, and that was kind of the answer. Hard stop, you cannot have it.
Well, they might as well just, then why not shut down Esser funds altogether?
Right.
If we're not gonna extend it to the three years that originally was the plan.
Right, and, and I have a hard time grappling with, um, who gets to decide like what, you know, really came from the pandemic and what didn't, because you had to funnel a lot of money into dealing with it while it was happening. Um, and that may not be in the year that it occurred, it's now we're seeing some of the after effects, so.
Right.
So bottom line. We need a bus. But we're not, bus eight now is a full-size bus.
Yes.
But we're not asking for a full-size bus.
No, we're asking for the smaller fourteen passengers who anybody could drive.
Yep.
Doesn't have to be a C D L driver.
Okay.
Okay, so that's an advantage in a fourteen passenger, and they can carry fourteen.
So if we're, if, if bus eight is in our fleet and they're picking up a full load of kids on that bus, how do we manage that with a smaller bus?
So bus eight, if it is the bluebird, was the one holding your sign outside.
Oh, that.
Oh, so it's not.
That hasn't been, okay.
I did ask.
It was barely holding up the sign.
So bus eight wasn't really in the fleet, it was just, we had.
It, it's, it's in my fleet.
But it's.
Right, but it's not actively used.
It was active.
Yeah.
But that there are so many years, it just started falling apart.
Okay. So small bus is ninety.
And I'm also looking at the, the two vans that we have, the, uh, transit buses. They were COVID-type, uh, contract or whatever, or purchased that way. And I can only carry, this is a fourteen-passenger van, but I, to and from school, I can only carry ten. And you know, for sports, I can load it up. But at the same token, they might turn around and say, uh, we don't wanna see, the commissioner might turn around and say, we don't wanna see those buses, uh, those vans on the road anymore. Due to the simple fact that I only have one door. And, uh, they've already recorded one accident where all, they didn't survive, because they couldn't get them over.
Not in our district. Not in our district, everybody.
Another state.
Just wanted to clarify.
The commissioner hasn't done that yet, though.
No, he has not done it yet. And he might not, you know?
Right.
But again, the rules from D O T is I can only carry ten to and from school. For sports, I can load it up.
Right. And with the small bus costing ninety, we've got a hundred and seventeen in that fund now?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's a current trustee and state, and it was just.
And we're agents to expend. And was that on the warrant that she had replenished to add to that?
It was.
And that was how much?
Two hundred thousand, I think.
I don't remember, that's a lot. I don't remember doing that, but, I mean, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean much, but I just.
Let's confirm, just to be sure.
Huh?
We were already having, we knew that this was coming.
Right. Right. So, and the vans?
One fifty.
One fifty? So added.
So we, if we spent out of that, just, we're talking about spending for the small bus and what else?
Well, I think you could look at your transmission from two, two lenses. I think if you're gonna take the money from the trusts, um, and that's a suitable purpose for that trust, I haven't necessarily looked at it, but, if maintaining a vehicle like that in that format is okay, you know, then your pocket looks a little bit bigger. You can afford to replace the transmission with a new transmission. If you're looking at your operating budget, it would be more fiscally sound to, to take the lower option and try to get what we can out of it.
So we'd end up w- with one seventy-seven left. Well, we're gonna be able to put one fifty in, in it, into it for, we are.
Yes, that, that estimate's still.
Okay. Um, so we're, we'd end up with about a hundred and seventy-seven left in that. Cause we'd be, we'd be at two sixty-seven minus ninety. I'm just trying to think about where we'd be.
And that one was actually the first fund approved, so the money, any monies go into that one first. I think we did it that way purposely.
Okay.
Right. And it's a van that needs the transmission, right?
Yes. Say what?
It's actually a, it's actually a caravan, right?
Oh, it's one of the caravan's?
It's an older van, so he can use that for as long as it'll run. The problem is, is caravans are discontinued, so you don't know how long it'll run, but.
About how many miles are on that, of van thirteen?
Last I looked was a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Right, but that's kind of like, uh, why are we gonna, for a hundred and seventy-four thousand mile vehicle, dumping eight grand in it, I mean, we couldn't even sell it for eight grand if I.
Yeah, you can say new transmission, but.
Well, like you said, they're not even making caravans anymore, so it's like.
And what would be the cost of a new van, do we have any?
The last time I looked, and that was last, when I first started, they were averaging it at forty-seven thousand. And that's a stripped-down model.
Right.
Meaning that there would be things that you'd have to do to the van.
Right, to make it.
And that's why I was going with the fourteen passengers, they're already, all, all that needs to be put on is our logo, and that's it.
Right.
And the fact also to, uh, coming out with, uh, more and more, uh, out of district. We have captured back S L C and we wanna do the best we can to maintain it.
Right.
What, so, do you come before us as leadership with, what's the ultimate recommendation that you're coming to us with? I can see the purchase of, of a small bus.
Yeah, I think we need to purchase, purchase the, one of the buses. Yeah, two is out of the question right now. It definitely buys us time, right, and so we can make that second deposit, so should another need arise. You know, we've gotten through to that for him. With the van, my guts telling me, keep it running, drive it to the ground, but don't sink money into it anyway. Um, and then we can look at getting another van or bus.
Is there a?
Or a road van to that.
Is there a used market for the vans at all?
Um, for the, for the vans, for like the caravans?
Yeah, like it, or, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Like school vans you're talking about?
Like, instead of putting eight grand into the caravan, like is there, maybe another school is selling theirs that isn't as in rough shape as this, maybe costing less than the eight thousand, but still gets what we need to stretch it for another year or two.
Right, cause we could also look at local, uh, transportation companies.
Right.
You know, that might be trying to offload some vans.
Yeah.
Um, that's certainly another option. And I'm not overly an expert on, on vehicles, because it's an end of life, but.
And it changes on the daily on, if it, you know, what is used and available. I guess I, I, I'm not comfortable, I mean, I'm not comfortable spending eight grand on a vehicle that is basically got one foot in the ground already. Yeah, I mean, I might roll the dice on, for fifteen hundred dollars for a used transmission. I mean, I get that there's no warranty, but I mean, at this point, it's a hundred and seventy-four thousand, there, there's no warranty on the vehicle either, so.
Yeah.
Right.
That's how I was looking at it.
Yeah. I would either, you know, I, I would lean towards a used transmission with the idea of looking for a replacement imminently.
Right.
So kind of start doing that legwork. And then obviously, you know, the purchase of the small, the fourteen-passenger bus. I don't know if you're.
You want to entertain a motion or?
Well, I was gonna say, I don't know if, if, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Can you, can you read that again?
Yep, I'll make a motion to purchase the fourteen-passenger bus for appro- what, ninety-one thousand?
Yeah, I would say up to ninety-two thousand.
Up to ninety-two thousand.
And if it's more than that, we'll come back.
Out of capital reserve. And the fifteen hundred dollars coming out of a repair line, or does that come out of?
Yeah, it would come out of this repair.
For a used transmission on van thirteen.
And Stacy, if we could just have the record state that it was the, um, Armington School District Bus Capital Reserve Fund.
Yes. Armington, yes.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey. Second by Mrs. Parker, discussion, I have one question. How long does it take to get the small bus if we, when we order it?
Well, at the time of, uh, before we were turned down, he had two sitting there ready to go.
Oh.
I got the call to, uh, Cessie and find out what they have. They might still have them, so.
And he was just gonna paint them and send them down.
I'll give him a call tomorrow morning and see what he has, and also, you know, cause he had them already set to come to us.
Okay.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Hopefully we get decent money out of that van. Thank you, Gil. Alright, uh, BCBA RFP constellations. Hi.
Hi. I wasn't sure if you had this in your board folder, so I'll just take one down, pass it around. Mackenzie and I met and opened the, um, bids for the BCBA contracts. Um, I will practice this by saying we have not had any actual applicants to be a district employee, BCBA. So, um, we met, we opened the, um, the contract bids, reviewed them and um, feel like the proposal that you see in front of you, um, was the way that the di- district should go.
And we've used constellations before.
We have, and we've had an ongoing contract with them, um, to provide clinical support and services as well.
And when would they have somebody that would be able to start?
For the beginning of school.
Okay.
Yes, so, um, Brian and I, uh, Brian Colley and I, um, interviewed potential BCBAs. Um, so it might be that we have one of the ones that we interviewed, they, they do have some others as well.
And not one applicant? So this?
The funding line.
Go ahead, yeah.
The funding line for this is, um, out of the IDEA grant, I would just, um, reconfigure it a little bit for, um, uh, using a contracted provider versus an in-house, uh, person, and I don't, um, have a concern really with that.
Okay. We need to vote on this.
I'll make a motion to move forward with Constellation's Behavioral Services for BCBA services for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year funded by IDEA.
The motion by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Doyle, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Um, next. Um, I put together a couple of, um, pre-bidding, um, board approvals, um, let's start with one looking at, um, special education staffing services. Do you actually have that in your board folder? I can pass it to you, you, if you do not.
I looked at it earlier, I think it's under, I think it was under reports, under bidding, right? So if you guys go to reports, yeah, it took me a second to find it, but if you go to reports, it was under bidding, D J E.
Yes, so you should have two. One is for special education staffing services and the other for school counselor services. Let's talk about special education staffing first, if you don't mind, and I can send a paper copy around if you'd rather look at that. Why don't I just send it to you since I?
I just opened the wrong one.
We got it, yeah.
I get it, I get it.
Printed.
Yep.
Okay, well, there you go anyway.
Check, I printed them. I'll take one, if it's printed, I'll take one.
Yeah, if it's already printed.
Just in case, you know.
I listened to the news, they said backup for your technology.
Yes.
Right?
Be- before, sorry, Colleen, before we go down this list here, where are we at right now with district wide? With special ed? This is, I know this is para and, but where are we at with, how deficient are we as special ed case managers?
I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Um, we are missing a, um, preschool special educator at Valley View, so that's one. And that's a special kind, that is a nineteen twelve license, not a nineteen hundred license. Um, other than that, Valley View is good. Um, at Henry Wilson, we need two special education teacher case managers and at the high school, one more. Um, for me, the critical need right now is Henry Wilson. If we were to have one more, it would be doable. At the high school, what, what we have going on right now for our plan is, is doable, okay? Um, now that can change. Oh, yeah.
We still need that
Yes.
Position felt.
Yes, yes.
But.
We do. It's just not at the point of, you know, somebody, uh, a teacher feeling like, I have so much to do, I'm not gonna be successful and so, you know, goodbye, see you later. I would go, you know, I have to go do something else to feel successful. I think, I think that it's, uh, possible. Um, so that's, that's where we are. So when I, um, wrote, um, my projections for this pre-bidding, it was, uh, for critical need. And I think that we look to address critical need, um, with contracting if we need to. Um, while we're trying to hire, um, directly to fully staff, if that makes sense. So to me, a critical need is at least one special education teacher at Henry Wilson. It is that preschool teacher as well, because.
Which was listed on that first.
Yes, um, according to the list of students that we have right now, it's doable, but it's not going to be cause we're going to get more of certain ages of students and then we're going to really, you know, be in a, um, in a pickle. Um, and then as far as para educators go, um, yeah. If I looked at that again today, and I think it might be a little bit less than that, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to contract um, for nine para educators, you know, I'd wanna look at less than that.
So this is essentially a plan B in the event that our direct hire doesn't result in the staffing that we need to fill the vacancies that we have.
Thank you, yes, and what I'm looking to do is to, um, have the board's permission to, um, request proposals from staffing companies, um, so that we can gather that information, look at rates, um, find out who has actual people available, um, talk to those people, um, so that we can, um, address some of the needs, um, that are impending for August.
When, oh, go ahead.
Go, you go first.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask where the, um, okay, no, you did put it, okay, I thought I saw it under general budget. I was wondering what budget line, yeah.
When you hire somebody from, in association with a staffing company, they continue to work for the staffing company, correct?
Correct.
At a rate that the staffing company sets.
Correct.
Are, are we able to? I've never, uh, just going down this road is so new. Um, so if I'm the principal and I have a parent in my building that works for the staffing company, the staffing company evaluates them?
Not exactly, um, they would, they would only be able to do that with the information from the principal and, um, those that are working with the person, the para educator, the special education teacher.
Is that individual, am I able, if I'm the principal, to assign that staff member duties?
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 Oh, yes, they would perform all of, uh, in fact, the job descriptions that I included here are exactly the job descriptions. Yeah, so we would be hiring them to do the job.
I, I mean, I get the critical need is, I get it, and it's
Critical.
Critical, it's, I'm, I'm scared, um, being a former special education teacher. Um, but I'm gonna be honest, if I see the price range of what these teachers and pairs are being hired for, given the critical, like.
That, I assume that's the fee associated with the staffing agency.
It is.
That's not their hourly, well, it's what we are paying, but that's not what the teacher is receiving as their hourly. That's incorrect. Um, we would pay the staffing company whatever the hour, that hourly rate is, and then from there, they take off all of their overhead and administrative costs, the benefits costs for the staff member, and then that person gets a percentage of, of it.
So we don't, we're not, we would not be responsible for the benefits, the, you know, all of that.
Professional development, nothing.
Right.
Okay.
That all comes out of that.
That all comes out of that overall cost. Okay, that was my question, cause the breakdown wasn't there, so.
Right.
That was.
And the, not that we would go down this road, because I know this board has the highest of, of integrity, but generally speaking, the flip side of the coin is if we, if, if a school district gets into a situation where these needs don't get filled and a student requires services that can't be provided, then the court costs involved in litigating, if it went to that, would be exponential beyond
Out of district placement costs, yes.
For this service. I know you do.
This would work out to a teacher making more than our teacher contract allows, then our teachers' union has every right to file a grievance, and I will tell you from experience, the labor board will rule with them. And that's gonna cost us more money than doing it this way.
Why would they not are employees?
Right.
Because they are working as a teacher in our building. We ran into it, we had, um, teachers coming in from Laconia who were paid at a higher rate, and it did not go well.
Well, I guess we need to know what the rate is, right, like, we would have to know what the rate is, this rate is not.
It's inclusive of everything.
It's inclusive of everything, but.
And just like when you look at our teachers' rates of like what they're making and then we include like their retirement and the, like, uh, and the medic, the medical, right? Like, they're not, like, their salaries are different than what we're like, what their cost is, so I think that's what we would just wanna make sure.
Definitely see that if the teachers' union is doing their job, they're gonna sit down and figure it out. They're gonna put it in the dollars and cents, and they're gonna come right down to pennies.
Right. Oh, no, no, I agree, no, I agree.
And, I mean, I don't wanna put us in a position where we're going to be hitting it from both ends.
Right, and now.
Sadly, this could become the norm.
Well, I was just gonna say that, well, it's, it's the norm in every other I view staffing agencies.
Oh, it's, it's definitely used in businesses, but schools don't usually run as businesses.
Um, schools all over the state are using staffing companies sadly. Um, and, and, and I hear, I hear, uh, I hear what you're saying, and, and so I, you know, that's why I look to you all to say, you know, there's a risk, there, there's a risk any way that you look at this, um, so I'm, I'm asking for your guidance in how you would like me to proceed, I'm.
And I think, well.
My question is, when, when do we determine that, okay, it's time to go here? You, you said once we expend our hiring and, you know, I mean, are we there now? Uh, when, when will we determine that we're there?
Well, and I think becau- well, I, I get that if we went down this road, there is the potential for a grievance. But I, I wonder, the DOE has basically opened the floodgates, as far as I'm concerned, as critical shortages. Everything's a critical shortage right now, according to the DOE. Um, so does, does the critical shortage designation supersede, you know, i- if, if we're doing everything in our power to hire these people in-house with, with our own recruiting, and it's not happening, but according to the DOE, we need these people for, you know, staffing, you know, head counts, all that. They, they're kind of pushing us to go this way, if we can't fill it ourselves. I, I just, I,
Well.
I don't know what deems.
But cri- critical shortage area in a specific content area and critical shortage area or a deficit in your special ed staff is a little different because of the laws involved, right? So we're probably lucky that last year, based on our deficits, that we did not have
Right.
complaints at the state level or, or more than we had, I don't know, we may have had one, if I recall, but about services.
Correct.
Because that's, that's my, and so student services for me as a board member is more important than the risk of a grievance. We'll have to deal with that as it comes.
Right.
Um, the, the risk of someone being mad that they're not making as much, I mean, I, I don't like it, but.
But we don't know that they won't be making as much based on their experience, based on who's hired, we don't know that. And, I mean, I know that you'll continue to look, we'll continue to put our feelers out there.
All of these positions are posted, have been posted, tell your friends, call your.
And honestly, the amount of work that all of the staff did last year to rally to make it work, like, this, staff can only do that for so long before they're burned out.
And a couple of days.
Right. So, it's, it's a lot, so it's no matter how much you feel supported, no matter how great you are in going in and Donna Gilbert going up and Giselle going up, or, you know, Ms. Henry go, you know, like, filling in, I mean, no matter how much you do that and how much support you have, at some point, it's, it's exhausting.
Make a motion to approve the pre-bidding approval form.
And we'll still have to come before the board, we'll still
Right, with the contracts.
Take a look at, yeah.
Yep.
But I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
This is the special ed one.
Yes.
Yeah, the special ed.
Can we get a breakdown of that eighty dollars at all? Will they break it down for us at all?
I can request that.
What would, what would also be nice if we could get a breakdown of the cost of a para or teacher here.
Both sides.
And then what it costs us on our end, when we pay benefits and, and other, you know, things, other things. Pay time, you know, any of that stuff, yeah.
But I, and we need to be comparing apples to apples, so if we get someone that only has one year of experience, we need to compare it to obviously someone here with a year of experience.
But for now, I, I'd really like to see us just start moving forward for this, because as, as the calendar creeps up on us, um, we, we have to try to secure that kids have the services that they deserve.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Just a question.
Yeah.
If it gets to a point where we have to utilize a placement service and we get someone placed, that technically doesn't close the vacancy that we have.
Correct.
Right.
It's just a temporary, does it say in there how to qualify a, a period of time?
Oh, that's a good question.
What do you mean, like, um, do I get thirty days notice and stop your paying?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's usually typically how the contracts, um, run, is that you give notice. And thirty days notice is typical, um, to end, you know, one of the contracted providers. Um, which would.
We find someone.
Right, which would be, you know, about right, you know, to, oh, we found somebody, okay, we give the thirty days notice. They, you know, they go out, they come in, that's about the right amount of time that you would. they, you know, they go out, they come in, that's about the right amount of time that you would need anyway, yep.
Right, for that transition.
Mm-hmm.
Hiring.
Yep.
Background check.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we have the guidance one.
So same idea, um, but I just separated it to another, um, RFP. Um, we have been without, um, school counselors at the high school, um, for some time now, and not a lot of, uh, applicants, so I thought perhaps this might be a way to find somebody, and for the high school to get the, the help that it needs, um, would be to go through a contracting process.
Make a motion to go forward with the pre-bidding approval form for, uh, guidance ser- got, yeah, school counselor guidance services.
Make a motion by Mrs. Lozey?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Doyle, discussion? Where are we at with guidance? We have no guidance at the high school currently.
Correct.
We have our guidance counselor at Valley View. Where our positions at the, at Henry Wilson.
They're filled.
Yeah.
Yep.
But no applicants on the horizon right now.
Correct.
For the high school?
None that I'm aware of. We, I've tried them all, too.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um, public participation. Manifest signing will be coming around. Um, we are gonna go into one more non-public, or, or back into one, I guess, briefly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our next meeting is August fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at a time to be determined. Um, Mr. Henry here? Hey, hey, Mr. Henry? Can you come out here for a minute?
The man behind the camera.
Pay no attention to that man behind the curtain. Your, with your work schedule now, sir, um, the earliest for a public meeting?
Six.
Six.
By forty-five, yes.
Okay. No, I didn't, I didn't quite, I really didn't know. I, I thought we talked about it earlier time, but I guess not, but early.
I can do it.
Yeah.
It just can't do the best.
No, okay, it's just, it just, uh, in my mind, I'm just thinking if we had non-publics, we could get through,
We can get to non-publics.
and then recess like we did tonight, and then get set up, so, okay.
Yeah, four classes.
Jayden Lewis went back up, he's full-time now, so he's working Monday nights.
Okay. Okay.
That may change in the following weeks, that's back.
Okay, yep, so we'll get back to that, that schedule, okay.
But six shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Um, so our next meeting, August fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you to those of you who came out this evening, and those of you who viewed us from home. I will entertain a motion to go into, um, non-public, we'll call it, can we revisit a non-public? Do we have to open up another one? Let's open up another one.
I was gonna say, make it clean, make it another one.
A non-public session three, under RSA ninety-one A colon three, two, A, B, and C for nominations and resignations.
Was that a motion?
I have no, can I have a motion? So my move by Mrs. Johnston?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Doyle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.